I'm going to call the Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, meeting of the Esau Meadow Planning Board to order. Those in attendance are?
Bill Fonseca.
Denver.
Cassandra Cher Swallow.
Rob Thorell. And Planning Director, Rob Wachilla. Thank you, Rob. First order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes of May 6th, 2025, and the meeting minutes of May 20, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next matter is the reorganization of the planning board roles. So we are to elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk for the period of July 1 of 2025 through June 30 of 2026.
I nominate Ross Denver for chair.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Absolutely not.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. I nominate Cassie Cher Swallow. Of course, I butchered the name again. As vice chair.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Clerk, I nominate Rob Thorell as clerk.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also then have committee assignments, so I would like to nominate Bill Fonseca to continue on the
Community Preservation.
Thank you. Community Preservation Committee, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will take up the position for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission when Mr. Punderson is able to join us. Pete Punderson sends his regrets. He did have knee surgery today, so he is unavailable for this evening. So, Mr., oh, and I would like to recognize that Cassandra has been reappointed for another five-year term. We're very thankful for our town manager, Tom Christensen, for doing that. So, Mr. Thorell, first order of business.
Case Site-2025-02, request for site plan review approval to construct a 4,837 4,837 square-foot agricultural commercial building with 81 parking spaces at 896 Summers Road. Assessors parcel ID 95-34-0, located in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Weir Farm LLC, 896 Summers Road, Esau Meadow, Mass. 01028.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to turn it over to our Planning Director, Rob Wachilla. And if you could please kind of tell us how we got here, what we're going to be discussing.
Absolutely. So, the applicant here today is requesting a petition for site plan review approval for a 4,000, roughly 4,000 square-foot building that is going to be used for agricultural purposes, 896 Summers Road. In connection to an existing agricultural operation on sites. Just to remind the board and the public about what this specific petition is, site plan review. It doesn't really focus on the use of land per se, but it focuses more on the building, the layout, parking, and traffic on site. And the Chair wanted me to kind of discuss with the public and the committee about certain things that can be discussed at site plan review hearings and things that really shouldn't be discussed. And so the category of items that can be discussed during this public hearing today include the overall site layout, which includes landscaping and lighting, parking, including the number of employees and seat counts in relation to the parking lots and the parking setup, location of buildings and relevant features, bulk and height of said buildings and structures, dimensional standards, including setbacks, lot coverage, and other related characteristics, utilities, traffic in relation to the use as well, stormwater infrastructure design and mitigation, and signage. So typical items that are not allowed to be discussed and should be dissuaded from include the operation of the use itself, unless it's in connection to any item in the allowed categories above that I just mentioned to you earlier, whether or not the use is allowed on the site. You have to remember that site plan review is a by right petition. So the merits of the use itself are not in question today during the discussion in this public hearing. And one other factor to keep in mind as well, for special permits, it's typical to put a condition for hours of operation for anything on the site. You cannot do that for site plan review. And Mr. Chair, that's all I had for that part of it. Did you want me to turn it over to the applicant to give their presentation, or did you want me to discuss the supplemental items that were received earlier today?
The supplemental items that were received today?
Absolutely. So, per, seeing from the applicant's counsel, I believe it was this morning at about 8:00 in the morning, there were a few items that were submitted in regards to addition of 896 Summers Road site plan review, including an updated project narrative, which has an addition that shows track changes in red of the new language, a traffic management plan, which had previously been requested by the applicant that has been sent to the planning department and included in the board's packet today. Finally, update the permit application report with red edits that's included in the board's packet to account for these changes. Yield my time, Mr. Chair.
So, there has been banting about the use of the the allow, or the use being anticipated to be on the property is allowed because it may be designated an agricultural property?
Correct. And
That's that?
Yes. So the Dover Amendment applies in this situation to a protected agricultural use as well as a business on site that's related to that use, but that is not something that's up for discussion in this public hearing today. And if anything, that's going to come up later on in the process with the building commissioner when they go for their building permit and for their certificate of occupancy down the road during the building commissioner's zoning review of the project and the site.
So it is not incumbent upon this board to determine whether the use proposed is agricultural in nature and then the use they propose is under the agricultural use?
That's correct.
That's a determination of the building inspector when they go to speak a building permit?
Correct.
All right. So, we asked Rob to do that, just to give you a little flavor of what we can and cannot address here. This is my third year in a row of chairing, and I just start off each hearing with the following. We are not Washington, DC. We are Esau Meadow, Massachusetts. We will have a civil discussion on the merits of the case. Be no yelling. There will be no screaming. There will be no insulting of individuals. You will address questions to the Chair. The applicant is not required to answer any of your questions. If they do so, they can. If they decide not to, they don't have to. If any of that, if there's yelling or screaming or insulting, you will be ruled out of order. If you continue that behavior, you will be asked to leave the row. So those are the, those are the way forward on how we're going to handle this. So what we normally do is we ask the petitioner to present their their application to everyone. And then we ask questions, and then we turn it over to the public to ask questions, or we hear from you on what your thoughts are regarding the issues that Mr. Wachilla had mentioned that we can address. So I would turn it over to the petitioner.
Disclose.
Did you read it?
No.
Oh, yeah. What's that?
Do you want me to disclose the relationship?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
So for the board, I just want to disclose that I have worked previously with Fitzgerald and Rob Lebec's group as well. I don't find any conflicts here, but if anybody does, please make it known.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of board. As many of you know, my name is Seth Stratton. I'm an attorney with Fitzgerald Law here at Center Square in Esau Meadow. I'm pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I'm more pleased to be here tonight than my prior appearances for Tom Hockins. I think this will be a more fun and less controversial discussion. I'm here with Rob Lebec from Lebec and Associates, who I know you're familiar with, Jason Tizzo, who's a representative of the ownership of the applicant and can answer any questions, and my colleague, Rachel Fancy. I want to start off with a few introductory remarks and thank you. Thank you, Rob, for that introduction, and we had a productive discussion this morning. I want to emphasize that this project continues the revitalization of the historic Forum State Line Farm, now blighted and previously used in some respects as a dumping ground. The applicant has already cleaned the site. I believe over 50 dumpsters of grass removed and is reestablishing a working farm. To recap here tonight, we're seeking site plan approval. And in that regard, we're seeking approval of waiver requests with respect to a full traffic study, a stormwater report, lot servicing, and signage, which I can touch on a bit later. I want to clarify one of the reasons for our involvement that came to our attention, that there was some confusion amongst various stakeholders as to what the intended use is and what it is not. And I understand that this discussion is not about the use, but I think it's important to understand the use in connection with some of the criteria that Rob mentioned in terms of especially traffic and other site plan-related matters. It's important for the board to understand what the intended operation is. So we submitted some clarifications into our project narrative in an attempt to correct and clarify the project's scope. We understand that the board recently received this, and we do apologize for last-minute nature, but hope that it'll be helpful in moving forward. We also, as Rob mentioned, submitted, supplemented with a draft significant event traffic management plan, which Mr. Lebec can touch on as necessary. So this is an agricultural project. We do believe that it falls under Chapter 48, Section 3, the Dover Amendment. The property use will include cultivation of apples, berries, pumpkins, herbs, and oh, I should mention, I believe Mr. Collins should be joining us. He's also a representative of the applicant and can speak to the farm-to-table aspect of this operation. One of the key elements of the farm will be using the existing shed for a to cultivate spices for a spice shed. The applicants have determined that that would be interesting and potentially lucrative aspect of the farm, which is to have homegrown spices that would be available for sale to customers and local restaurants, et cetera. There will be an apiary, which, as came up this morning, I had to Google it, but aviary is for birds, apiary is for bees. So apiary is for bees. There will be an apiary on-site, a farm stand. And then in terms of programming, the intent is to have agritourism events and educational program as well as some farm-to-table events. Envision a farm-to-table wedding event, a farm-to-table meeting where there's catering at the event that focuses on the farm-to-table aspect. What is, was it not? It's not a restaurant. It's not intended to be a restaurant. It's not a brewery. It's not intended to be a brewery. The site improvements proposed on the plan include primarily a barn for, to be used for the sale of produce as well as events, a gravel parking area and landscaping. The barn will be 84 feet by 76 feet and will have only a limited catering staging area, no full kitchen or and not appropriate therefore for restaurant use. I think at this point, if we have, Bill, are you available? And can you hear us? If you could just speak a little bit to the farm-to-table mission and and your passion for that, I think it'd be helpful. Go ahead, Bill.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you just let the audience know?
Can you hear me? Okay, excellent.
Would you let the audience know who you are?
Absolutely.
What your address is?
My name is William Collins.
Okay.
Yes, my name is William Collins. I'm a resident at 409 William Street in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, and I have been the owner of Center Square Grill for 11 years, right in Esau Meadow.
Okay.
Is all that coming through okay?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So my background in Esau Meadow is I have owned a CSG for 11 years. We've employed thousands of people over those 11 years. This project for me has been, you know, more of a feather-in-the-hat project, something that I can work with solid partners on to create and revitalize a farm, something that can benefit all of our local businesses through creating produce that we can use in our separate businesses, but also something that would create an agritourism experience for children to be able to come and learn, for people to be able to enjoy the space, also to not have it turn into another housing development in Esau Meadow. We felt it was important to keep this a farm. So where does that all start? We started with the existing apple trees. We restored those apple trees, trimmed them back, and got them back to a place where they can start producing fruit. As Seth said, we intend to work with UMass, and we intend to put a trellised apple orchard in to the likes of about 600 trees, which would likely fruit about 20,000 pounds of apples annually. We don't expect to sell 20,000 pounds of apples annually, but we do expect to sell some on the farm, use some in our businesses, and also donate some of those through a partnership that would help, you know, with people that are food insecure. In addition, for us, I've been a member of the 4-H Committee at the Big E for 10 years. I've been the farmer's market liaison for all of the farms that interact with the farmer's market at the Big E. And I've been the demo chef for the Big E to promote local agriculture within the New England region for all 10 of those years as well. Most of it on a volunteer basis. I will disclose I have been paid from time to time to do certain things for them. But it's been a, it's been an excellent relationship, and it's one of the things that fueled my passion for agriculture in our great area of the country. So in addition, currently at Center Square Grill, I have a farming relationship with Austin Brothers Valley Farm. I actually currently have four steer on pasture there that we raise for our restaurant and for the use and sale at Center Square Grill. The local raised beef is fantastic. It's a wonderful product. It's something that I can have raised to the standard that I see fit. It's something that I would tend to use for our farm-to-table mission at the farm as well. You know, I think that this project is an exciting project. I think that, you know, the ability to grow not only apples, but raspberries, blueberries, pumpkins, give the public a place to come, gather, have farm-to-table events is something that's an exciting thing that no other farms are really doing in our area. And for us, I think it's, it's already light-years different than it was when we first started the project. But imagine being able to go down and buy your local honey that was raised only a couple miles from where you live, buying some of our local pumpkins that are raised right there. I think it really is a game changer on 83 where it used to be a dumping ground. And so I know that, you know, my teammates on this are super passionate. You know, we've even talked about trying to create a little bit of a corn maze for the fall. I don't know that will hit corn, but Jason's already been working on other options for that. And, you know, this whole project, it's, like Seth said, it's never been intended to be a brewery or a restaurant. The last thing I want to do is have a 5,000-square-foot restaurant in Esau Meadow. I've already got one of those. Very happy with that. And for us, we really do want to create an environment that is a great spot to gather that ties in my passion for agriculture and my partner's passion for agriculture with products that we can use in our businesses and also create for the public.
Questions for Mr. Collins? I have two questions. One, what will be, what will you retail on-site? And then it's about a 4,500-square-foot building you're anticipating putting up? And what will that specifically be used for?
Okay, let's start with the first question. So retail on-site. And again, this project is a project that has been taking shape, and not every iron has been detailed out. However, the list of products that I would intend to retail based on growth crop season and other variables that could happen would be this, but not limited to. Apples, raspberries, blueberries, pumpkins, spices that are created and grown in our greenhouse and then privately labeled with the Hawks Landing brand, honey. We would also intend to potentially do educational tours with children around the apiary, but also maybe with some of the other crops as well. We would also potentially seasonally have some kind of a corn maze or play structure that children might be able to enjoy when on the farm as well. In the 4,500-square-foot building, we intend to host community events. Community events that could be many things, okay? The event could be Alliance Club Dinner. It could be an ERC5 chamber gathering. It could be a retreat to discuss things. It could be a nonprofit event. It could be somebody's wedding that they want to have on a farm. I don't necessarily know that we have an exact market that we're targeting for that, but we do know that that barn would be a great gathering space that would be used for community events on our farm.
Okay. Before I open to the public, Mr. Shatten, do you want to add anything?
I would like to turn it over to Rob Lebec, just to briefly touch on the traffic aspects. Rob? Hans Barmot. Do you provide sit or?
If you're going to use the board, stand.
Very good.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, I'm Rob Lebec, Marla Lebec Associates. We did the site planning for the proposed project. The subject property contains about 8.89 acres or so.
Mr. Lebec, what are your credentials to be doing this?
I'm a registered landscape architect from the state of Massachusetts. I have, I am President of Marla Lebec Associates, a multi-disciplinary firm that employs civil engineers, AP architects, registered land surveyors, environmental professionals.
Are you a traffic engineer?
No, sir. But I do have a traffic engineer on our team, subconsultant Bowman Associates, who you guys are familiar with, and I think they actually work for the town. I do have their report. So I'm here generally to talk about the site development project itself. If there's questions related to traffic, I can certainly refer to the traffic report, but I am not a traffician. Okay, so the subject property, there's a, about a 4,500-square-foot building that's proposed, as you're aware. There is a parking area. We're requesting a waiver for the parking area so that that could be a gravel area, kind of consistent with a farm, kind of this grassroots operation that's being proposed. That would be approximately 61 parking spaces. For your regulations, 59 parking spaces are required. We're showing two curb cuts accessing that parking area. The reason for the curb cuts is we believe that this is the best circulation pattern. As you get a little bit farther down the road, it doesn't make sense to have a curb cut. We're utilizing kind of two existing, generally existing curb cuts. One is rather wide. That would be reduced down. All of the access would be 24 feet wide. Particularly, the two curb cuts would also be 24 feet wide in the standard parking spaces. In addition to the general parking, we have included in that number of 61 parking spaces. We have the proposed handicap-accessible spaces, which need to meet with I-21 CMR, as you're aware, which is the Architectural Access Board of Regulations, and to have accessibility. So these parking spaces would be handicap-accessible. All of the parking in general would be hard-packed gravel. These parking spaces would need to be, make sure that they meet the accessible route requirements. All of the accessible walkways from these parking spaces need that, which is a maximum of a a 5% run and a maximum of a 2% crossload. So pretty flat in general. Run can be slightly steeper. Anything greater than that would be a ramp. In this particular case, there's no ramps proposed. The access to the building is generally to the front, or sorry, the front side of the building. There's also a walkway around the building. We're showing two patio areas that would accommodate the building, kind of more of an entry patio in front, and then a more of a we'll call it, you know, a usable patio area that people will filter in and out. There's an overhang on this portion of the building here. There's a third curb cut, which would be strictly for access to the service area. This is kind of the service side of the building, so this would be a service area access. Again, also gravel. You're seeing some plantings that are proposed. They're in a grid pattern because these are, would be at the orchard here. There's also some required as part of the cleanup operation. There was some impacts to some of the buffer zone to bordering it. I'm sorry, to an instantly contaminated, actually, an intermittent stream. We're showing the buffers there too, or outside of those buffer zones. So we are not subject, in this particular aspect of the project, we're not subject to Conservation Commission. We are, however, filing for a restoration plan for some of the work to be planted and some of the plantings that we're showing adjacent to the farm pond that exists there. So, any questions generally on the site plan itself?
Yes. So on Ainsley Road, the first two parcels are those homes?
Yes.
And I guess the question then would be, so it appears that you have plantings behind at least one of the houses?
That is correct.
Why are they not taken all the way down to Shaker?
Well, these were an orchard. This is shown schematically. They're going to probably plant a lot more than we're showing. We didn't want to overshow what might be planted, but per Mr. Collins's comment, we're showing much fewer plantings in that orchard than he's calling for. So there is the possibility that that orchard could be carried down towards the, towards Summers Road and even further, depending on how the space is utilized, they may, that might grow. And again, no restrictions related to planting in the orchard. But my, my sense is that that will actually be much more, much larger than we're showing.
And the second question is on the placement of the building. So as you further get into the Connecticut line, you go back towards Scantic River?
Yes.
So why is the building so close to Shaker and not, you're not utilizing Summers? Shoot me. Thank you. Thank you. You're not moving the building closer to the Scantic River, where there appears to be a lot of space?
Good question. So the Scantic River is a regulated area associated with the Scantic River. There's a 200-foot river park area. Also, the pond itself and the intermittent stream that leads from the pond also flows into the Scantic River, which is also a regulated area. The main reasons we're not utilizing the rear portion of the property. Imagine the Summers Road frontage is the most optimal kind of point to access the property. So we're trying to keep impacts that are required to kind of utilize the property to a minimum and maintain as much of the property as a farm as possible. So, you know, so obviously, this component of the farm is, we're trying to reduce the overall infrastructure that we need to operate the farm. So it's, yeah, focused on Summers.
Other questions before he continues?
Rob, what's going to happen in that other three acres or up north there, right? Because I see there's proposed apiaries, and that's about it.
Generally, farming, they'll need to adhere to certain requirements. There are, while there are provisions under the Weapons Protection Act for farming activities, there are also restrictions that also apply. So they would need to work with Alex from the Conservation Commission, and anything that they do that's in jurisdiction, either make sure it's exempt or get a permit associated therewith.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
So there's a couple items, and just full disclosure, I am not a traffic engineer, but I do have the report from Bowman Associates. If you do have the report, the last page is probably the most impactful in terms of the information cited, which is the contingent page. So Bowman Associates has done a trip generation analysis, essentially what this is. They looked at the site. They've looked at the amount of traffic that is anticipated and the impact from the project. And I will be careful not to speak or to their comments other than providing you the data itself. So at the time of this report, there was 88 parking spaces. I think I just mentioned that we had reduced that to 10. The building was shown in this report for about 5,000, which has been slightly, slightly conservative. That said, you know, I'll just read verbatim. I think it's just the cleanest way to do it. Based on the review of the available ITE data, that's the Institute for Environmental Sustainability, the project is estimated to generate approximately 308 vehicle trips, 154, 150 exiting vehicles during a typical weekday. The approximate 610 vehicles trip, 305 and 305, so 305 entering and 305 exiting during a typical Saturday. Project is estimated to generate approximately three vehicle trips, three entering and vehicles and zero exiting during the weekday morning peak hour. So very minimal with regard to the morning peak hour. Lightly more impactful would be the weekend. I'm sorry, would be morning, morning peak hour, again, nine, entering in 20 seconds. During the weekend afternoon peak hour, the approximate 116 vehicles trips, 65 entering vehicles and 51 exiting vehicles during sixty five entering vehicles and fifty one exiting vehicles during the Saturday midday peak hour. The additional vehicle trips projected to be generated by the project would result in an increase of six percent or less to the weekday traffic volumes on Summers Road. Given the trip generation data documented within this traffic assessment, the project is anticipated to have a minimal effect in the surrounding roadway network. And that is verbatim from the traffic report conducted by Emily Buck PE of Bowman's. He also there also provided what we're calling a traffic management plan. Again, the facility is anticipated to operate on normal conditions quite well. Again, a very, you know, fairly minimal increase with the six percent that they talked about. Again, it's more of potentially more of a weekend use and an afternoon afternoon use. So it's not conflicting with the the morning peak hour, people trying to get to work. But that said, we do understand the potential for what we'll call events. There were certain events that might see the occupancy, et cetera. So the proponent has gone and put together a very detailed in consultation with our office as well as the their attorney's office, the sheriff's office, put together what we're calling a traffic management plan. And the idea is that there are sections of this that basically pertain to how they would deal with certain types of events. It talks about the purpose and scope, event notification and stakeholder coordination, which includes reaching out to the police department, the fire department, the butters. And the idea is to look at egress routes under number number three, traffic management strategy. You know, accessing egress routes, onsite traffic control, off site mitigation, wires, parking management, onsite parking capacity view, temporary overflow parking opportunities, should that be applicable. Any parking layout revisions to normal parking conditions, security. Or is a crowd anticipated crowd management post event procedures? And, you know, just a conclusion that describes that. And then any traffic mitigation efforts for unplanned traffic events. So there is an eventuality that happens that wasn't planned. The the idea behind this is just a boilerplate guidelines that could be utilized, maybe included in a condition. And the idea would be that prior to events, and I believe there's a couple of timeframes in here. I think one was twenty one days prior to an event and then fourteen days prior to an event. So twenty one days, they would notify butters, notify the town, even the fire department, not less than fourteen days prior to an actual event. Again, I don't want to scare people with the idea of an event. This was actually raised through a discussion with your planner, who is looking for a comprehensive approach to this project, which is a good idea and we respect that completely. But so we put this together, it wasn't put together by the proponent that said, hey, we're ready to have these big events. That's not really the case. The case was in the event that is morphs into something else. Again, this is starting out as a very grassroots effort, the farm to table idea. But we want to be proactive with the approach.
So just for the people in the audience and for me who need to lay terms. So significant event is you, the the building size is unable to handle the size anticipated. And it means that there will then be outside activities as part of the scheduled event.
Yes, sir.
So technically someone could put up a tent outside of the barn and you could have a hundred and fifty people there. With as an example.
Proper permitting.
Yeah, okay. Trying to make the audience aware of what potentially you're planning.
So I don't mean to cut your offer up, but I think Bill Collins is raising his hand. And I don't know if you want him to address some of these comments.
Sure. Yeah, just trying to give the residents a feel for what is going on.
Sure, thank you. Some of those questions you asked.
I think they passed me in here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I I'm sorry to pop in there with a hand raised, but I I did just want to address that. I think that we are looking to get our building and site plan for the building approved at the occupancy that makes sense for our parking. The events that Rob is speaking to you about are not events that are planned. We have no plans for any major events like that. And these would be events that would be outside the ordinary scope of our business that we would seek town approval for outside of our normal scope of operation. I just want to be abundantly clear that we're looking for a site plan approval for that building and that occupancy. If we intend to exceed that occupancy for any reason at any time, we certainly would come back to the town and follow a special event. I want to be clear that that would be a special event guideline, not an ordinary event guideline.
So then process wise, who do you see going to for that approval in the town?
Town council, I believe.
Town council. Yes, Steph? No?
That's what I would believe.
In the traffic plan, the whole point of the traffic management plan is just so they have an idea in case those special events ever do happen for any reason. There's some sort of documentation that we can rely on that they have to follow in order to prepare, plan and be accountable for how those events play out, if they happen at all.
So just just I like to just bring it back to me to understand it. Your normal retail and so forth and so on goes through planning board. And then other events that are outside of the capacity of the building go to town council for approval.
Just to clarify, I believe.
I I think simplifying this a little bit.
I'm trying to simplify it.
Well, it it. Yeah, no, and and I I just want to say it one another way because I believe it will. If I were all of a sudden to operate a special event at Center Square Grill that was going to have a five hundred person attendance, my occupancy is a hundred and ninety four. Obviously, I would need to seek town approval to go above my occupancy. So we're looking for a site plan approval for our current occupancy of that building. And that's all we're looking for tonight. If and when we ever deemed that we might need to have a bigger event, we would come back to the town for approval on that.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, this is a draft for for the the board's consideration and specifically the police department, the fire department and the butters are on the notification list. If there needs to be another town department, certainly that could be included.
Yeah, and.
And if someone's wondering why I'm asking so many questions, I want people who might be watching this on TV to understand why we're, you know, why we're doing it, why we're faring it all out. And I'm trying to anticipate some of the questions that you might have and try to get them answered before you have to stand up and say your thing, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't want to over complicate it, but I just want to clarify, I think the the plan, and again, is a draft plan. If we were to seek occupancy for a special event in the building outside the building capacity, I think we would seek to go to town council. What we're using, we're using the building occupancy as a proxy for the ordinary permitted regular operation crowd. If there is an event that would have an anticipated three to four hundred people attendance, again, not planned, but we've been asked to prepare this. Inside, outside, we would follow a plan that is in draft form that could be a condition of this approval. It doesn't currently say that we would go to town council to get approval for that event. It says we would notify police, fire. So I just want to clarify that that board could impose a condition or we could have a different plan. But that town council is not currently in the plan for the special event plan.
So then that just begs the following question. So and two counselors are here. Thank you for attending. So I anticipate, you know, these outside events would have alcohol involved if it's a celebration of some kind. So that would require approval by town council on a one day event. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One one last item, Chair. So we were coordinating related to a storm, the stormwater. You you noticed this is a labor request. We have communicated with Mr. Berman from the engineering department, W, I believe, to stormwater. There is an exemption provided in the stormwater regulations specific to cultural use. There are very specific requirements that need to be met. We are aware of those based on the work with UMass and the work that these folks will be doing with the state anticipate meeting those requirements. So in our communication with Mr. Berman, we had suggested such a condition. I do have a copy of the email and I think Mr. Wachilla.
I have it right here.
Also have that. So basically, we believe that that is addressed or would be addressed to the condition. If the planning board goes to include it. And for some reason, if that didn't get satisfied, we would take a look at the stormwater. Thank you. There's.
Anything else in the petitioner? The floor is open. Who would ever like to come forward? Please come sign in. Remember, Mr. Wachilla indicated that there are certain things that you should really be focusing your comments on. I would ask that you please try to stay within those guidelines.
Hi.
Hi. Lisa Adam, I live at seven Ainsley Drive, the house most impacted by this. I can appreciate that they're trying to improve the property because I've been looking at it since two thousand and seven. So it's nice to see improvements. What I don't appreciate is how close that building is to my property. I don't appreciate having a row literally in my backyard. I was assured there would be three rows of trees as a buffer. There's one, the last rendering I saw had three. So I have some grave concerns that this isn't. But I was told, I was told also the building would be much closer to the original homestead. See the stakes from my house, it's much closer to my home. So I would like to know why they felt it was so important to move closer to only homesteads and not shift over a little bit more. There looks to be plenty of room in front of the parking areas where they could shift that over. So for me, this is quite distressing.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
So when you say you were told, who told you?
I went to one of their first events in the winter and spoke to two out of the three owners and asked these questions because they had a different rendering. This is one that's different from the one that I had. At the time, the parking lot was literally abutting my property. So I appreciate that they, you know, made changes or whether they did it on their own or because I appealed to them, I'm not sure. So I appreciate that that's further away because it looked like in the original rendering, it was literally on my property line. So that I can appreciate what I just don't is what I see here today.
Thank you. Who else would like to be heard on this matter?
As folks come up to speak, could you just write your name on that little form up there so we know who you are? Thank you. You don't have to put your full address there.
No.
My name is Jeff Alessio. I'm on the butter to the property. I live on Forbes Hill Road. First of all, I like to fluff myself up a little bit like they have already. I, unlike Mr. Collins, do live in town. I live on the property close to what's being. Oh, been there for since two thousand and seven. Been a lifelong resident of town since I'm six, I'm portion sixty five years of age, sixty four years of age. So I have a little stake in the town. I like to see what goes on. I've seen projects fail. I've seen projects bloom. Some of them are good, some of them bad. And I just like to know, we're here tonight to discuss certain things. And what's confusing with the audience is that we cannot bring up the usage part. I understand, I'm I'm learning to understand that. But they've explained their usage to us, and I think they're kind of putting the horse before the cart, so to speak, or the cart before the horse, where they've telling us what they're kind of going to do, but they don't have really permission to do what they're going to do. But they're looking to at least get permission to do this part of it. And if they get this part, but they don't get the use part taken care of, this is all for naught. Am I right? So I I'm I'm confused. Yeah, so I'm confused, a part of the audience is confused. And I ask you that you don't take any actions on anything brought forward tonight because of the fact that if this mitigation plan, which I happen to run across today, the farm at Hawks Landing Traffic Management Plan, is that new this morning?
It's the first that we've seen it.
I don't think the people behind me who have been in towns probably just as long as I have, they're lifelong residents, are aware of this. And if you read it, it kind of sounds like, you know, stuff that you're planning for the Big E, unfortunately. Stuff that people live across the Big E. We're going to have traffic cops here. We're going to do this. We're going to mitigate traffic this way, has signs up. And to me, I don't think that's what we're we're looking to sit tight with in the community. How many sort of events are they going to have here? They say they don't plan for any. I'm looking at this project here and they're going to sell berries and fruits and apples and all that stuff. And I'm not here to knock them. But I'm I'll tell you right now, there's a lot of money invested in this property from all the investors that are involved. And I don't think they're going to make their money back by selling apples, berries, pumpkins substantially. So what I think their their game plan is to have those events, make them more so relatively available to the community and profit off of that. With that said, is that a land use issue? I don't know. But I think it has to be brought up to let everybody be aware of what the possibilities are. They've admitted the possibilities. They've said there's no restaurant plan here. I don't know. One, they're going to be serving food. I I would expect down the road, there's going to be music. I expect a band of some type. I expect noise from it. I the lighting we can talk about tonight, since that's part of the under your preview. What kind of lighting they're going to have for their parking lot? Everybody's, you know, lighting's gotten better over the years, I understand, but it still presents a offshoot to the residents. So there's there's concerns there that I have. The dust, the parking lot, it's gravel. Well, in my opinion, there's one reason why it's gravelled. So let the water drain through. You don't, if you don't pave it, you don't need a retention pond. That's my guess. Okay, if you do that, we're going to have a dust problem on these hot summer days or even in the winter, believe it or not. Dust from the land farmland will travel. So that's that's a concern also, the dust of having a gravel parking lot. I've also. The trash that comes from the event, hopefully they would be, if it was to come true, they would be able to monitor the trash around the surrounding property. I think the traffic mitigation alone is an issue with this project. And I don't think it's fully thought out of the the study they did, they provided to us. I don't think it means doesn't really hold any weight. How can you tell how many cars are going to come and go from that facility? I I know that they're behind me, they're not saying this place is going to fail, so they want it to flourish. In order for it to flourish, you need customers, you need to have traffic. So the numbers they give you, I don't know if they could live off of those numbers, to be honest with you. And they're going to bring in the dollar that they need to turn a buck. And I understand that's the that's one of the reasons why they're doing it. You wouldn't be doing it to sink money in, I don't think. So I'm.
Can I just quickly address that issue?
Yes.
So if it fails, it's on their dime.
Yes, but yeah, but what are we left with?
An improved property.
Well, what if they just abandoned it and don't do nothing?
And.
We're back to what we had before?
You're right. I mean, that's, yeah. I mean, they don't get into business. Sometimes they fail, sometimes they succeed.
And I, you know, it came to be.
Yeah, we'll see.
But I hear a lot about the compliance with the Dover Amendment. We can't talk about it here tonight, but at some point in time, who's going to monitor their compliance to the Dover Amendment? What town agency is going to do that for us?
So that would be the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer. That would have to enforce that.
Would that be a yearly thing? Would that, do you know, I can't speak for, I know you can't.
I don't know the specifics on that, but that would be the individual that would be responsible for it.
Well, if they if they sat here before you and said, this is not going to be a full time restaurant, we have no intentions now or ever to be a full time restaurant on a residential property. That may put some ease to people, but the end result is that they might just see the opportunity to continue on with their adventure, their venture here and make it more of a commercial establishment, which I don't think. And the zoning issues here, we're looking at residential A, so I'm still kind of not, probably the people behind me are scratching their head how this becomes a commercial venue, even under the auspices of the agricultural thing, which they have not proven to be yet. There's not a hundred and sixty apple trees or whatever they're saying out there. There's no raspberries out there. You can't push it down into the wetlands anymore to grow it. Can you can you limit the planting of certain vegetables in the wetland area? Can you disturb that? I think their space is limited for all this. I just don't see it making the making the, you know, they're they're bush, they're pushing the agricultural part, but I don't think that's going to pay their bills. I really don't. I think it's more going to be what it is. So I'm I'm very concerned about this mitigation plan here. It sounds good, but it doesn't really hold a lot of water. Contact the fire, contact the police. It doesn't hold, doesn't really solve a problem that the people in the neighborhood are going to have. Traffic coming and going, parking. Traffic coming and going, parking anywhere.
I'll just say how I feel right now.
Yeah.
I would not be in a position to vote for anything related to this right now at, at this point in time. I personally am confused why they won't take the plantings and take them all the way down Ainsley, as that woman had indicated. I just, I don't see the rationale there. You've heard my question about the building. Certainly we can feasible move the, the third driveway to be used for access to the building. We can ask that that be moved as well. The other concerns I have is I would think that this board would want to assure that there'd be no parking at all on the major roadway summers at all.
How would we enforce that though, sir?
So you would know better than I.
Oh, but if it's, but not.
Not putting you on the spot.
I know, but if it's not posted, you have to adapt amendment, you'd have to post it, let them know.
You'd have to post.
And we're looking at residents looking signs up and down Ainsley.
We have made recommendations, you know, in a number of occurrences, situations where we've made recommendations to the town council that they have adopted our recommendations. The latest being with the construction of the new high school on Melwood Avenue. Might notice you go down Melwood, the first two hundred feet, there's no parking on either side. So town council can take our advice from time to time. Rob, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base upon the location of the building driveway and stuff like that. So they are constrained because of the wetland buffers. And I know they, they can't really push it any more right than they have to, maybe slightly, but I know the hundred foot around the pond and then two hundred foot around the center of the, of the creek or the river or the brook behind it. Make it pretty confined to just that left portion of the property.
Well, let's look at that map and maybe you could eliminate. So the around the pond are the markings, the slashes?
Yes.
Is that the hundred foot limit?
Uh, so the, I'll just kind of give everybody the overview. So there's a farm pond that exists here.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's regulated. Okay. From that, there's an intermittent stream, so we flag the bank of that stream. This line here that wraps around those two resource areas is the fifty-foot buffer. And then the outer line is the one hundred foot buffer. But this is all within jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, not to say it's completely impossible to work in. But in order to work in it, you have to do an alternatives analysis to show that you don't have a good viable, viable alternative.
So just give us a guesstimate. You know, don't be held to it.
Yeah.
So between the outer one hundred foot to the, to the building, it's how much?
All right, one second. So there's one hundred to there. Call that two hundred and, let's call it two fifty-ish.
Okay.
Bar.
And a building would have to, I mean, a roadway would have to be how far away from a building?
There's a requirement then or by law.
Yeah, the road, we have to actually be a certain distance away from.
From the actual road, but not the driveway.
But, but just if I could, through the chair, no. The discussion about the location of the building is a good one. First of all, I don't think these gentlemen have any concern about adding additional plantings on this side. So I would say that that's probably, no problem. This.
Obviously you know we would not vote unless.
No, understood.
Came back with a plan that showed.
Understood, completely understood. Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to force to vote either. This particular access is just for service vehicles. Understanding the concern, we certainly could screen that. That said, the building location, if we were to push it, there's actually a grade change for the people that live in the neighborhood. They know this. There's a pretty great change down to the pond. If we were to shift it this way, if you see these lines here, these are proposed contours. We would then be pushing those proposed contours into the jurisdictional area of the Conservation Commission, which, like I said, is more impactful, less environment sensitive, and also provides less area. The reason the building's oriented the way it was, it's the idea of this side would kind of be the, the front of house, right? This side designed as the backup house, so it's not bothering anybody so that the, you know, any sort of people mingling in and out of the building during, during normal events. Patio here, maybe walk on the lawn, walk around. General, this area would be open. That's, that's the technical definition and location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, how much space is behind that building from the butter with the driveway?
About a hundred feet from the, from their property line, to the bill, to the building and patio, maybe call it sixty-five to seventy to the driveway.
Okay, got it. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I have a couple of quick ones. The lighting on that, is there any representation of lighting? Or is that after another stage?
No, 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 that's us.
No, but is that another stage they're going to submit?
Like a photometric plan?
Yes.
I mean, that's up to you as the board, but because they're not that close to abutting households and the parking situation does have downcast lighting, it's up to you.
All right. Yep, thank you.
Good, yeah, we're good.
And regulation of trash pickup for the dumpster, who, who?
So we can put it as a condition on how soon times during the day that it can be picked up.
You can make that condition of the permit, by the way, for trash pickup.
We have done that in a variety of other projects.
Well, my, my concerns is that they're filing for this Dover Amendment, which limits what you can do and what the bylaws can do to them. And that is something that I think the residents ought to be aware of, that there are going to, you are handcuffed a little bit by this farm.
So the, so the Dover Amendment, and I'll give a, what I think is a concise, and if Mr. Stratton wants to add to it, feel free, but there was a case many years ago that involved the town of Dover and placement of an educational facility. And the courts indicated that a municipality, a local municipality could not could not prohibit the use of a educational facility on parcels in that town. That has expanded
Yes.
over the years to include things like group homes, solar farms, as we found out in Easton Metal, because we lost a case on that.
Accessory dwelling units?
Excuse me? Uh, accessory dwelling units, that's the newest one. Community, what's the MBTA Act?
That's for transit stops, but that's a transit.
Well, I guess also the state has, state has encroached upon the ability of local communities to make zoning decisions that used to be the purview of local communities.
Right.
I'll leave it at that. And it has to be a compelling public reason. And oftentimes the courts get in the middle of it and they will say the legislature has determined that that's a compelling public reason and agriculture appears to be one of them. How would I do so?
Guess the next.
So yeah, so our hands are tied on a lot of stuff.
But it doesn't, doesn't mean that the residents don't have a voice in moving forward and, and, and hold, you know, accountable what we have to, what we're in our preview to do.
So it is incumbent upon every person in town that if they see zoning violations or things out of the ordinary, it is incumbent upon them to bring this to the attention of town officials. Because oftentimes town employees are stretched thin. And if they're not told by the residents that there's a specific issue, and I know our zoning enforcement officer hears from me often about a variety of issues, then things get worse. So it's incumbent upon all of you to pay attention to what's going on and report it as necessary.
And the signage is another issue down the road. Peas mill on this together, I guess.
So signage is a later item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's just being piecemeal down the road. They don't have an idea what they're doing with the sign. I don't expect you to answer for them, but apparently they don't have an idea what they're going to do with the signage.
I don't know.
All right, I don't expect you. I'm just.
Come through with this board.
Right.
Yeah.
But as far as electrical LED lighting and stuff like that for the signage?
We, oh, that's a signage issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing yet, but they're allowed to design it later on if they wanted to. And if it's a significant enough change, it could warrant them further review with this board. But it depends on the type of sign they're proposing, whether it's a freestanding sign or if it's a sign affixed to the building itself.
It has power to it. Are they allowed to do that out there?
Yes, they are. They just need the appropriate permits from the building department and the appropriate trenching permits, et cetera.
That's the next stage when they.
So there have been some people standing up. I don't want to get tired.
Awesome. I just make a quick announcement too. So all the documents for this petition are available on the town's website for folks in the audience. And I do have business cards up here. If you have any trouble, find it. It's on the planning, community development webpage. On the left, you'll see a tab that says active case files. Take it to everything we have currently at all of our boards and committees. I can hand out business cards after the meeting. If you want to find those documents, please come up and see me after the meeting. Thank you.
We see your hands, Mr. Collins and Mr. Kay. We're going to let a couple of the speakers go before you.
I'm John Dalton. I live at thirty-seven Ainsley Drive. I'm the newest one in the neighborhood. We moved in last year. My property is right here. Have a neighbor in between us, but right now we can see clearly out to eighty-three. It does look a lot better than it used to with the old rundown house and everything else that was there. But they're showing the Aberry right here, proposed. It's actually currently right behind this property right here. Two weeks ago, opened my pool. My son actually got stung by one of their bees. Ended up getting an allergic reaction, had to have his wedding ring cut off his hand. This here is currently not in the proposed area. It's behind their property, but this is still supposedly proposed. I'd, I'd like to see it be moved further away from my property line. I do have concern. They did plant a number of our varieties along this, this property line currently. Some of them have basically died with the drought, but I'm sure they're going to be replacing those at some point. But currently until those grow in, there's easy access to the properties. Easy access to the back of our property. I have a swimming pool, in-ground swimming pool, all fenced in towards this area of my property. They're talking about having kids in the backyard, in the back. I don't want kids running into my yard just because they want, think they can get away from their group or go through the bushes or whatever they can. It's a nice attraction. I would like to see some sort of additional buffer or barrier, maybe a fence along the property line to prevent that from happening. I, as, as law requires, have a fence around my swimming pool. Now I've got to worry about kids into my pool. It can easily open the gate. And who knows what's going to happen with people coming and going. I mean, it's supposedly a corn maze. A lot of them happen at night. Nothing going to happen. We've had enough break-ins in our area. Kids come up from Summers, Summers in Connecticut. They've been hitting cars along our street. It's concerned with the safety and security of our families. I just recently had an alarm system put in my house because of that. This is safety on my side. Now, we had police in our backyard last year. I was away on business. My wife was home. You know, the police drove through this property chasing somebody. And, you know, they ran supposedly through my yard. Just very concerned with that from the safety standpoint. I have young kid, young grandchildren. So we don't want to have a mixed use. You know, Ainsley Drive is a nice, quiet neighborhood right now. We'd like to see if there's some sort of, obviously somebody has brought up the signage, but a better buffer of some sort or a security fence of some sort would be nice to be considered. We want to be good neighbors. I'm all for business. I had a, a brew pub, not a brew pub, but a, a restaurant pub adjacent to my house in Rhode Island. We just moved here last year, about the same distance. They had night volleyball at bright shining lights, whistles blowing till ten o'clock at night. We'd have to call them on occasion to tell them, hey, it's after ten. And they'd shut things down, but we just have our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the, you know, you talked, somebody said eighty-one parking spaces, now sixty-one parking spaces. Is that, you know, what's the capacity of the building? Does that, obviously doesn't include capacity outside the building. So there are some concerns with capacity. We'd just like to have that little extra protection on our end. And awareness that, you know, there's something happening over here and Hamden next, from what we understand too. The surveyors were actually down Ainsley Drive yesterday, survey access to the property. Hamden line is right here. There's one neighbor here, that's me, my other neighbor, the property, so. And I know it's an evolving process.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Name is Joel Adam. I live at seven Ainsley Drive, the one that's going to be most affected by this. We were told by several owners that there would be three rows of trees. Now, if this is going to be a working farm, this accessway, which will be gravelled, will be travelled probably a hundred times more than the parking lot will be travelled. Stirring up dust and noise. So I don't know why they didn't continue the trees down here, because these trees here are the ones that have been in our backyard right along our property line for years. And they're very thin. We can see everything, the entire field. That we have visibility on everything. So there's going to be nothing to stop noise. There's going to be nothing to stop dust. There's nothing to stop anything from this property. And us being the closest house, just wondered why they couldn't move it just a, you know, like another fifty feet that way. But this road here will be travelled probably more than this whole parking lot will be travelled in any given day. And that's going to be a lot of noise that we want. At the, like they said, they, they cast this that there'd be apple trees all the way to the road here to block, you know, be, and, and in order of being a good neighbor is what they said, but this plan here with just this extremely thin row of apple trees that are covered in vines right now that I doubt will even produce any apples is not going to cut what the traffic will be on this road if this is a working farm. These, there can be tractors and trucks and deliveries and everything going up and down this road. So.
I'd just like to add, on the other side of the existing apple trees, there's already a service road where we've already had pickup trucks driving. It's a dirt road, but they're already using that, which is then even closer. So.
Okay, thank you.
Let's verify that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Cuthbert and I live along about like the, I guess, the, the most abutting border here, about six hundred and fifty feet or so. I'm going to mirror a lot of what John said, so I'm not going to have to, you know, in a meeting, I would say me too, but the biggest concern I have is, you know, the privacy and the, and again, the fact that they may, and I think Mr. Levek was saying, hey, there's going to be a lot more apple trees. I wonder if there's something once they've, if they do want to bring back the next iteration, as I would expect, if there is that buffer. Does that become a, an obligation of theirs? Is that, you know, or can they say, you know what? Moving target, we're not going to do it. Can you answer that?
Yes, so this board can require additional buffering. And, and we can require, you know, a, a certain width. You know, we can certain, say you have to do a certain height to start.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do all that.
That, that's, that answers my question there. As far as, and thank you. So there can be, hey, we want three rows of, or this much buffer of agriculture.
Just as an example, Doris Dental on Maple Street. We, they were the last ones in. We said you have to have, require a certain amount of our varieties. They have to be certain height. They had to be a certain brand. So yes, you have the ability to.
And that means it doesn't go away. If it gets on paper for now and the next owner or what have you, that comes a part of the contract.
Yes.
Okay. That's a one.
We do have the ability to set conditions and that would be one of the conditions that we would look at.
Perfect. And I want to stay within scope because I guess, you know, the entertainment and stuff, because where we are is line of sight for the proposed building. If it were able to move, I get these conditions, DEQE, what have you, that's going to, they're going to resist that because I get it. It's going to encroach on wetlands that then might actually bring the price up and, but movement that. movement that way would also force this, you know, viewing area off of this patio outside of, right now, it's two hundred and twenty feet from my property line and right in line with the pool and the privacy that I've enjoyed. And what I honestly bought the property for was that. So that would, buffer would help, I think, for that. To the security part, we're the ones that got, you know, we've also been not broken into, but the prior owner was. There is this access kind of thing. I did have a question. Mr. Leveque had a study, and I just didn't know what the, we said, I think it was six hundred plus cars on a Saturday, what have you. Six percent on a, on a weekday is the influx of what they would anticipate. Was there a percentage on what that impact is on a weekend? I heard the weekday, and you can get back to me, I just, or it takes a little time to read that, but I'm just curious, is it up on the weekend, six percent as well, or?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Provided only for the weekday, that, that percentage.
Okay, that was only the weekday, not the weekend.
Okay, so I'd be interested to know, are we up ten or twelve percent on a weekend? That would be interesting. I'll double down on the gravel. I do think it was a very, you know, two people have already hit that. The dust and that, it's just gonna create, and with six hundred cars through there on a weekend or on a Saturday, that's gonna be quite a thing.
I think it was three hundred in, three hundred out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, thanks. You know, this is also gonna help, and I don't know that I'm over speaking here, but we talk light pollution, and I get it that there are lights. Are those, is there anything that says, hey, at ten o'clock, when you close down, those lights go off?
Well, we, we can, but there's also issues that they need to be able to protect their property.
Yeah, right.
As well. So we have to take that into consideration.
Right, and I can, I can understand the balance there.
But you can have the lighting facing down and, you know.
We have done that before, especially with the dentist, Dolores Dentist. We said, reconfigure the lights and have them, because if we're pointing at buildings, that houses.
Right.
We said, we're not gonna allow that anymore. So you point them down. There's all this other stuff they can do now.
Right, so I would just ask that that mitigation be brought forth in the next iteration. And obviously, lights from cars is, is the other part, but that's only up until ten, but I, I just see this fanning of lights throughout all these backyards. That's gonna be pretty persistent during a weekend. And again, this might help in that buffer if there was something in this area. Last one, I don't know in the plan here. I don't know if these are, I couldn't tell on the, are these bushes or what is this around the patio? Is there some level of? A low hedge. You're right, okay. So that's, that's a little bit more additional privacy. I appreciate that. That's pretty much it. I appreciate your time. I think that covers it. Again, me too, and a lot of the items that people have brought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? So I'll turn it over to.
Oh, we got one more.
Mr. Page?
You know, I have to.
I, I do know that.
I should bring your meeting if I didn't come up.
Stamp, that way you won't have to keep signing your name.
I would just like to talk a couple of things. I know we're talking about traffic mitigation in and out, and they've created a plan which I think is phenomenal. I don't know if.
With some tweaks, we got some tweaks.
Just down the street to Meadowbrook Farms, when they announced that their first picking of the corn is in. I think these guys can only hope that that many people show up to their place. And again, that's a full operating farm. I, I think it's one of these where I'm assuming we're operating under the Dover Amendment and that we're agricultural. I see businesses in town, La Fiorentina's is one, that they can anticipate when holidays are and when they're gonna be really busy. And when they do, guess what? They have a police officer out there. And I would think that would be the same here. I would think, I mean, if, if you're looking at this realistically as a farm, farms have gravel driveways. It's just normal. It's common. You know, they have paths and roads out into the back. They cut through their fields. And that, I'm sort of anticipating that this is gonna be operating as a farm. And I think this board understands that if all of a sudden it doesn't, and it's operating in another way, that's not conducive to the town or legal, that you guys are gonna step up and say, hey, you can't do that.
Totally.
And, and so I think there's a lot of concerns because it's unknown. We're not sure, well, how much is the building gonna generate? How much is parking and stuff like this? What I don't see on the plan that I do know exists, if I, so just for all due respect, these arborvitae's that are in here cover about four hundred feet. I know that because I installed them. They called me because the neighbor had asked for some privacy. They bought all the arborvitae's and asked if I could offer and put them in, and I did. And yes, there are some that'll be replaced. But like up and in here, the reason we stopped here is there's large trees over here that shade the area that our varieties aren't gonna grow under. So, so although the plan looks great as here, it doesn't quite show everything that's already there. On a typical house, you know, your driveway's sixty, sixty-five feet away. I mean, we have houses that only have a hundred-foot lot. So the distance here, it looks small, but when you look at the size of the property, it's actually a little bit larger than you think. There is room. Again, they talked about trellis-type trees and stuff. The Apple Place recently, I did them four or five years ago. They are phenomenal. But if you do a row like from here to here, you're talking about seven hundred trees in a row that you can plant. Because they're actually planted eighteen inches apart as you go along. That's the standard. So, I mean, this is a large area for planting.
Well, I think it doesn't, so.
It's hard, so they just put big trees in here just for a general appearance.
Yeah.
But I think once they actually do it and plant.
But we have to see that on the plan, that that's part of their plan is to plant all of those trees there.
So recently I did a design basically like this, and I put them in, and you know what you see on the plan? You see a little pencil mark.
Well.
And that's it, because you're doing, if you did six hundred of them in here, that's all you'd see because they'd just be little dots, because you're talking such a distance here. So I think what they're putting in here is something that realistically you can see. This is the apple orchard area.
I'd like to see that initially.
I, I do like the double entrance, cuts down on the traffic. You know, as far as the flow and stuff like that. And like I said, I think, I think the board should basically take into consideration, see how it goes if they do need an officer there for an event. Have them get an officer. I don't think there's any issues, stuff like that. But just my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
All right, Mr. Page mentioned that you guys could reneg the farm use.
No, no. If they, if they change their operation, so it's no longer considered agricultural, I think that's what he's referring to.
That's exactly what I was saying. In other words, if they put in a full-blown restaurant that doesn't meet the agricultural purpose.
Right.
You know.
And they have to be shut down, wouldn't they?
Exactly.
And that's relies on, not you guys.
Zoning enforcement. So the town, just so people know, so the town has a building inspector. The building inspector, I believe, will make the determination on the agricultural use.
Yes, he will.
And then, as it happens to be, the building inspector in this town is also the zoning enforcement officer. So if there's an issue, you raise that with the zoning enforcement officer, who happens to be the building inspector. They will make an inspection, and they will make a determination on whether it complies or it does not comply. And if it doesn't comply, he issues a cease and desist letter, and we go from there. Mr. Collins or Mr. Kay, take your pick. Mr. Collins?
I'm going ahead.
Okay, I just want to quickly go down a list because I really want to ensure the fact that we also hear what everybody is saying, and we do also want to be good neighbors. I'm hearing the additional buffering concerns, and I think we can certainly bring back a revised plan with an updated planting map with our plans for buffering. I do need to say out loud once again, and I thought I was extremely clear about it the first time, but there will be no restaurant here. This will never be a restaurant. We're not building a restaurant. We have no intention to build a restaurant. So I don't want that to fall on deaf ears because of what may have been misconstrued or heard or hearsay. This will not be a restaurant. All right, farm. We qualified as a farm in two thousand twenty-four. We'll qualify as a farm in two thousand twenty-five. As a farm, I want to let you know that we've already begun the planting phase of nine thousand linear feet of pumpkins. The seeds are arriving tomorrow. They'll be planted with a ninety-day germination to harvest rate, which will put us right in October. Those pumpkins will be ready in October to be sold, which again, will make us qualify with those sales as a farm. When it does come to the apiary, we are extremely concerned that somebody was stung and had an allergic reaction. I'm not sure that we can say that that bee was our bee, certainly in close proximity. We look at that, and we are sorry for, you know, somebody being stung, not what anybody wants. I did want to touch in, the survey in Hampton, that has nothing to do with us.
Understood, understood.
Not us.
Understood.
Yeah, most farms in our area remain unpaved. I think Ralph touched on that, and I just wanted to answer a couple of those things. I, I just need everybody to know, our overall goal is not to create enemies. We're happy to work with the planning department to create a plan that works for everybody. That's why we started with the arborvitae's. We'll continue to revise what we do to ensure we're good neighbors.
Okay, great. Mr. Kay, do you still have your hand up?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Tom Kay, Tom Kay, two sixty-five Millbrook Drive, East Long Metal, Mass. You know, we all came together with this project. I do live in town. And I actually do own a house on Ainsley, and my son lives in the same neighborhood that, that adjoins Ainsley. I take great pride in the fact that we've formed this group to regentrify an old farm that was part of the lexicon of East Long Metal. For years, I drove by this property, and it was a sad sight to see. We took the initiative to try to regentrify this farm. Now, number one, I want to go with the concern of where the barn's located. We took great strides into researching where the barn was previously and where the existing house stood that we tore down. That was a dilapidated fungus nightmare. Okay? That was left abandoned for fifteen years. We put that barn painstakingly positioned to avoid, and it points out towards the mountain ridge, towards where nobody's backyards are, and it's the current place where the existing house used to be. So we did all that, that research, and then regarding the, the, the driveways, those are the existing driveways that are on that property. There was an existing loop that went around the house. And then there was a big curb cut where the plant mark used to be. Those are all on this plan, and we reuse this existing curb cuts. Number two, regarding the apple trees on the back of seven Ainsley, we will be adding more farm-type trees and shrubbery there. So I promise you, as a neighbor to you, we are going to do that. But when we painstakingly took the time to meet up with Cold Spring and UMass in the fruit extension program, they discussed making sure that the rows of trees actually move in a north-to-south direction, not an east-to-west direction for which those original apple trees do lay, okay? And we did not want to have disturbance of the apple trees in that area where the front, the, the front frontage is. So we wanted to make sure we were planting like maybe arborvitae's or something that had a less of an impact on the actual fruit itself, that fruit tree. So basically, from where Mark, the back, back neighbor, and we planted those sixty arborvitae's, we're planning on taking those entire fruit trees and bringing them down the hill towards the pond. That's how they'll naturally grow even better and create a trellis effect. So with that said, you know, I do live in town. I am a neighbor, and I really look forward to having a, a, a wonderful farm in town, so.
Thank you.
I yield.
So I'll ask if there's, we're not gonna, we're not gonna end the meeting, but I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter. Yes. But what I'm going to do is, we will probably take it back to this, after you speak, we'll bring it back to the board. We will address our concerns based upon what we've heard. We would ask that Mr. Shatten and the team take what we have, meet again with the planning director, and bring it back to this, but in two weeks. Hopefully you will have listened to the concerns that we have, but also the neighbors, and see how we can, we can get to it, get to it.
Mr. Chair, I also provide some comments to after.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Dalton. I'm at thirty-seven Ainsley Drive with John. And I just wanted to just say two things. So it's actually two years that we've lived here. Last year when we opened our pool, there weren't any bees. This year when we opened our pool, there were over a hundred bees on the cover. I couldn't even be out there helping my son because I'm very allergic. So I'm pretty sure that the bee that stung him had something to do with, not the proposed apiary that is already actually at the edge of our property. And our pool sits back at the end of our property.
Okay.
Pumpkin, I'm all for farm-to-table. I think that's a great idea. I love commute, I want to be involved in the community. I think having a community that has something like that is wonderful. But you're, now you're talking about having people. It's, a farm is one thing, but are you having people pick these pumpkins? Are you having, you know, if there's public people walking on this property, arborvitae's are fine if they're living. But we need a fence. We need a, we need privacy. We need safety. We have young children. We have an area that people, you know, our house is, you know, a little bit further back from the end of our property. So, you know, it's, there's a big, big garden back there. What's to say people think that it's part of their garden? You know, so I just, I'm, I, I love, I think that, that's, you know, the arborvitae's or whatever, but a stable, permanent barrier for safety.
Thank you.
The Apple Place has fence that protects their neighbors. The Apple Place has public people. It's a farm. I just don't understand why we can't have that same thing.
Thank you.
That's my concerns. Thanks.
Rob?
Bob W.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a few things that are brought throughout the course of the meeting. So I've been taking notes on several of the comments that have come up during this meeting. Obviously, I'm gonna compile a lot of the stuff that was discussed today and let the applicants, consultants know exactly what we're looking for for the next hearing date, if that is what the outcome is of tonight. Just a few things I wanted to bring up as well. So there were comments provided on this petition from the building departments, from conservation, which is the department I oversee, and as well as DPW. They did satisfy the comments from conservation by adjusting the parking and the buffer area. Building had comments about the existing sheds, and they weren't indicated on the original set of plans. They had updated that as such to show what they're doing with the existing buildings. And the last comment pertains to their curb cuts. Within the DPW regulations, a certain distance of that curb cut has to be bituminous asphalt and then transition into the gravel. You can still waive the requirements that the whole thing is asphalt, and that's obviously up to the discretion of the board. If the whole parking lot does become asphalt, that requires further stormwater mitigation and more costs to the applicants. Just keep that in mind. Last thing I wanted to touch on is in regards to the traffic component. So the one thing I want to kind of indicate to the public and to the board is that we don't really know what the flow of traffic is gonna be within the parking lot. And my concern is that you have two curb cuts, no clear directional patterns on the site. There could be instances where two people might be exiting both of those curb cuts at the same time, causing issues. So I think one condition the board could explore later on is a condition for directional signage indicating where the entrances are, where the exits are, just to show the flow of traffic so cars can safely enter and exit the property without creating further traffic issues on Summers Road. So the applicant did provide a trip count generation from a registered transportation traffic engineer within the Commonwealth, which to my satisfaction is very sufficient for what's gonna be generated from the sites. There are residents that are bringing up issues about Ainsley Drive. I would say as the. I would say as the planning director, I would definitely ask the board to consider getting more information on the impact on the abutting intersection with Ainsley, as well as whether or not the roadway can handle the increase in traffic. According to the report that Mr. Levesque read, it seems that the roadway can handle the increase in traffic. But I do still have concerns regarding the intersection with Ainsley, which doesn't have any signage and is not appropriately marked or lighted intersection. So those are the concerns I had, Mr. Chair. Obviously, it's the board's discretion to determine whether or not the further traffic requirements should be addressed and I yield my time. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jason Tito. I live at one twelve Longview Drive, Long Meadow. I'm the third partner in this project. And I just want to say that I'm glad that everybody came tonight and voiced all their opinions. That is important in this project and in the whole planning of it to get what everybody's thoughts and concerns are. We would like to say that we do plan on being good neighbors. We've said that from the start. I think we've shown that in our other businesses that we both own in each town that we are good neighbors and that we plan to, to live within the fabric of the neighborhood. So we're not looking to do anything crazy. We're not looking to do anything that is different than what we talk about. I think it's very important for us to be transparent. I know everybody thinks that we're not being a hundred percent transparent, but I think every construction project has evolving plans. And, you know, part of the whole planning process is to come in, show you guys what we think is the initial start. You guys can make your comments on it. They can make their comments on it. We go back, we adjust and we try to meet everybody's needs and also ours as well. To also, I know everyone's concerned that we're not really trying to be farmers, but you know what? Nobody's a farmer until they are. I wasn't a brewer until I started brewing. And it's just like how, you know, that's how it happens. And I'm actually meeting with the FSA on Thursday to go through the planting plan for the corn. So we are doing our best to learn as much as we can about farming and we plan on phasing it in as, as we learn and adjust and can make things happen. But we do have a plan. We think it's pretty solid and it doesn't, you know, involve these crazy events that everybody thinks we're going to have. You know, we're not going to be Sonny's place. We're not going to be, you know, all the things that everybody is thinking we're going to be. We're just trying to take a piece of property that was a derelict property and regentrify it and make it something that is great and keep it in the agricultural thing. That's it. So that's it.
Thank you. Going to just stop the public part of it right now and bring it back to the board. So the board have any specific questions based upon what you've heard before we get into a general discussion? Okay. So I guess here are my thoughts. I feel like Mr. Page, I have to have a thought on something about. So from what, from what I, I gather from listening and I, and I try to take into consideration what I, you know, what I believe needs to be in the best interest of the entire town, because that's why we're here. Is this board is, is to look at projects of how they impact, impact the entire town. I, I think what is missing on some of the plans are the actual plantings that people have talked about so that they could actually visualize. So specifically seven Ainsley. So, you know, it would be interesting to see all of that actually on paper and then actually bring in a picture of what those actually look like. So that someone could sit there and go, oh, okay, there's going to be three rows of this trees and these trees look like this. And what's the growing schedule on all of that? And, and that may end up being better than actually putting up Abervites type of situation. But we can't really, we can't visualize that unless we see it. So I think that has a big issue. I do believe it's a very valid point about, I mean, and Mr. Kay indicated that you place the building in such a position so you could look up, look into the mountains, I guess, or the ridges. So I mean, that's, you know, that's aesthetically, it's very nice. But can't you get the same visualization, visualization? Help me out here.
Visualization.
Visualization. If you actually move the building further away from the Ainsley properties, even if it's ten feet, twenty feet, thirty feet, certainly it would be still outside of the one hundred foot buffer zone. And I do take, you know, I, I do have not issues, but I'd like to see it more, more vetted out. So if you actually show the plantings along seven Ainsley and, and actually the other sites that, you know, have been referred to, then I don't know if I have as much of an issue with the roadway that would be the service. If you could see the, visualize the trees on all of that. You know, hours of operation, you know, nine to 10, proper lighting, all down. So, and then they go, actually, you know, you have security lighting, you know, after 10 o'clock and nothing more.
But hours of operation for those things only, correct? So we're referring to.
Yes, yeah.
Make sure you.
Yeah. Rob, when I have been working long enough, you can read my mind, you know, is what it is. Because I think you can have a, a good project, but I, but I, and everyone, and I don't doubt Mr. Kay and Mr. Collins and Mr. Sitso that you want to be good neighbors and you all have a track record of being good neighbors with your businesses. So I'm going to take you at your word based upon past experience. But those are kind of the, the things that most impact my thoughts on things. This, the traffic management plan needs a lot of work. You know, I know it's a draft. I know it's preliminary in nature. But, you know, I, I guess I would like significant events defined more. And what triggers a significant event rather than it just being outside the building? Is it a significant event if it's a hundred people or more? You know, unplanned traffic event that needs some type of definition to trigger that, to trigger then notification of the town and so forth. So I think, you know, they're all in quotes, but I don't see a def, I don't see a clear definition on all of that.
Chair, before you move on, I'm also going to review that plan too and give a feedback and comments.
Yeah.
We're expecting in two weeks.
Yeah.
Or whenever the continued hearing date is.
So, I mean, this needs some more work and, and actually, you know, I don't know if this has been put in front of the police department or the fire department or whoever, but I would like to at least have them take a look at it and provide their suggestions on it. We rely on those individuals like a fire chief and a police chief and a DPW director to give us guidance on, on these type of things. The only thing that I am one hundred percent certain on is we, we will work with the town council if we can, that there be absolutely no parking at all on, on the management, none whatsoever. That, that just cannot take place. I mean, I think you hit forty-five miles an hour when you're down that stretch. And we don't need people pulling out into traffic and, you know, from, you know, parked and then pull out. You can come out from the driveway, you know, that's a little different.
Maybe a national park, but not in East Long Meadow.
Yeah. So primarily, those are my thoughts. And if anybody else have anything else or did I?
I would agree. I think there are conditions that.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is to give the petitioners several weeks to refine everything. Certainly you have the ability to look at these meetings online and see other thoughts that we had and other people might have. Is two weeks sufficient time for you to be able to do this? Yeah.
Okay, okay. So just to head up, that means this next hearing date would be July fifteenth. Six P M is the starting of the meeting time for the planning board.
So I would then entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, July fifteenth at six o'clock.
Yep.
So moved.
Second. Can I ask a question before you?
Sure.
Just, and I'm sure we can take this up with Rob. As to the traffic management plan, I hear your comments. We're, we're kind of struggling because it's a requested plan to be provided for events that we don't think are going to happen. So that's why it's a little bit loose, right? So I think if we can get some better, some direct questions that we can respond to, rather than kind of create a plan for something we don't think we're going to do.
I think it's so definitely obvious that it's a hypothetical situation that you're working with here, right?
Right.
And you don't really have a lot of specifics you can throw into it, but there are certain things that we could refine a little bit more. And once I review it and discover what those things are to make this plan more complete and then obviously get feedback from the fire department, the police department as well, and DPW, I think we can provide that to you in a timely manner so you guys can make those changes to it.
Great.
Till the back river is going to do it.
Perfect. Any other further discussion and motion to continue? Hearing none. So for everybody in the audience, we'll reconvene in two weeks. As our planning director indicated, their revised documents are online at the town of East Long Meadow. Go to the planning department.
Cards appear for you.
And cards are there that you can get. And in the meantime, if you have any specific comments or suggestions, feel free to forward them to the planning director who can distribute them to us. We'd ask that you have them by noon time the Friday prior to the meeting so he can distribute them. And with that, on the motion to continue the meeting until, or the hearing until July fifteenth at six o'clock, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay.
Kevin, if we were to oppose this planning part of it, we talked very a lot about uses of this. The petitioners have, they brought this to our lights and yet we're, we're hitting up. We can ask you. So they need relief or where they can go, just come to use issues. Where is that meaning play to play to? Who is it?
But Rob, I'm going to let you address that. Okay, so you mean after the hearings concluded? Is that your question?
What's the next step after you do that? But now there's.
Yeah, so they go straight to the building department next. There's also a separate issue they're, they're going to conservation commission on regarding the pond area. That has nothing to do with this. That's next Wednesday. But for this, once this is concluded, go to the building department and start the permitting process with the building department, which also includes the zoning review for the agricultural stuff as well.
Residents express their opinion and usage.
So that would be something you'd have to ask the building department specifically. There is an appeals process for building permits. I don't know what the specifics are of that. If you wanted to reach out to the building department, they can give you a better answer than me.
So I just want to understand. So we couldn't talk about uses. The building inspector is going to be in charge of their plans that they submit. And the public doesn't have any direct feedback in a public forum for that? Like here? So, okay.
That's just how it is in the zoning bylaw for this type of, of development.
So, so I think most of the concerns here is the usage, like not so much where the apple trees are going to be planted and where the driveway country is going to be. I think the issue is used. So I want the residents to know where they can voice their opinion on that.
The Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. To be, to be perf, to be perfectly honest with you, that's, that's all part of the Dover amendment because they're hoping to be classified as an agricultural use. So, well, I'm not arguing.
It's Dover.
They're not qualified yet as a Dover, are they?
The building inspector, they have to submit his plans to qualify.
I don't think we should talk about this anymore, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
All the hearings been.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
There are issues that are still discussed further on.
Okay, good way. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Eric, can we take a recess?
Yeah, three, five minute recess.
Yeah, so we do have our consultants.
Yes. Hi Julie, we'll be with you in five minutes.
Just an interview with Judy Barrett. Barrett Planning Group LLC about the East Long Meadows zoning bylaws.
Hi Judy.
Hi there.
Hang on, hang on one second.
Okay. All right, let's go.
Okay. Can we also add Bob Mitchell, please? Because my colleague Bob is also in the waiting room and we need Bob. So you have both of us. Okay.
And just so you know, we're joined by two counselors, Ralph Page and Marilyn Richards. Both former planning board members and planning board chairs.
Lot of history here.
Wonderful. So Russ, it's good that you did not try to meet with me today because I messed up the calendar. And the time that I had talked to you about, I actually ended up talking to the building inspector. So anyway, I, thank you.
He's younger, younger and better looking than I am.
It was, it was fine.
Okay.
So we're happy to meet with you. My colleague Bob and I are, you know, kind of teaming on this project. And I, we wanted to just, first of all, say hello to you. But second, to, you know, to ask you folks about particular issues or challenges you've had working with the zoning bylaw in its current form. If there are particular things you really want us to focus in on or things that you really want us to take a look at because they've been problems for you.
Quick question.
Dover amendment cases, you know, being one of them, I suppose. But, you know, just, you know, we're kind of doing really sort of a technical, very deep dive read into the bylaw right now. So we invariably end up with a couple of buckets of issues when we do this kind of work. One is a collection of things that are just technical mistakes in the, or in the bylaw. You know, things that are inconsistent, things that are unclear, things that are, are not, you know, current with state law or things that need to be changed because there are judicial decisions that say, by the way, you can't do that anymore. And then there's this other bucket, which is policy level things that probably the town might want to work, might want to look at in a more comprehensive zoning review. So the audit work we're doing is focusing mainly on those kind of big technical things, but we all want to hear, we do want to hear about, you know, the challenges that you, that you have working with this bylaw. Bob, did you want to add anything to what I just said?
Well, first of all, greetings. It's nice to be here and we look forward to working with you. I would say a couple of things. These, this type of process, as Judy was just talking about, tends to focus on what's wrong. But we would also like to hear what you think is what's right. What works well from your opinion? And, you know, just to get a sense of, okay, this section seems to be working well. Everybody's in agreement with that. We can move on. And so that's, that would be very helpful as well. So just to pass that along.
All right. You asked for it. So there.
Go for it.
There are two things that I think this planning board in town have done very well to make it easier for businesses in town to get going. One, we, this board used to approve all the signage in town. We have turned that over to the building inspector. And so I think that process is much quicker, timely, better operation. And then several years ago, there, there used to be in the ordinance that when there was a change or a change of operation at a location, that it had to come to the planning board. And we did away with that. And so we leave that, I take, do we leave that to the planning director or to the building inspector?
So both. So now they apply for a business license with the town and that's how we kind of do the zoning review with those types of applicants. So, so say it feels like a hair salon. They would have to, in the past, they would need what's called a site plan review waiver from the planning board just to move into a new building, even though that used a lot by right in that area. But now we can just go ahead and do it administratively through the business license applications. And that saves so much time and effort and allows for businesses to open up a lot more efficiently than previously.
So those are two wonderful things, I think, that we've done. You guys must have some suggestions or ideas as well.
Those interviews. Good thing's a shorter list. Say that. The town councils will have their own interview, though, with our consultants.
So. So the people in this room. So Rob Terrell says there's Russ's rules. Russ's rules are I am trying to introduce things in the zoning ordinance that would improve the appearance of the town overall. And so things like we allow a, we allow a camper. It's supposed to be parked on the side of the house. But there are, then individuals have three campers and not just one. You know, that is. You know, that is to me, not good for your neighbors. It doesn't add to the appearance. It doesn't, it, it diminishes the values of the properties all the way around. We've got something that says you can have unregistered vehicles on your property. The second one needs to be, um, covered. Screened, covered. And most people just put a car cover on top of it. There was a suggestion at one time that said that you can have one unregistered vehicles and then the rest need to be housed. George Kingston raised that, and I don't think we, we never did anything with it because he says he knows a guy that has like 12 antique vehicles. And so you didn't want to do away with all unregistered, you know, cars. But, you know, there's a property up on, uh, Maple Shade near Porter. Half of the time of the year, he's got like four cars parked in his driveway with car covers on them. They're all unregistered. I mean, it kind of looks cheesy, doesn't really add to the appearance of, of the property all around it. So quality of life without, I, I guess, without really restrict, without really impacting people's rights to use their property. And I know that's hard to do. There was one that we sent to the town council, which they didn't agree with about parking vehicles on front lawns. We suggested that they shouldn't do that. They, we got overridden, which is fine. That's the way the charter works. And I think the same way with parking boats in their driveways. You know, to me, that's a quality of life issue. I wish you would look to see through our ordinance to see maybe what comparable communities have for like quality of life issues would be really interesting to me. So I can't be the only one. Come on.
No, I'm big on quality of life as well. And, you know, because I, I've lived here for over almost 30 years and, and people are into more and more recreational sports now. So, you know, the, the, the issue of campers parked on a property, is it a registered vehicle? Is it an unregistered vehicle? There's a whole host of issues. And if we could get some sort of feedback on what other communities do, I think that would help us in arriving at the right decisions, just to help continue to a good quality of life here.
And I'm also want to see what other things we can do to make it easier for a business to, to, uh, to start. So we recently did the, uh, massage therapist.
Yep.
And you indicated at the town council meeting that a lot of people come, say to you, I have to go through all this rigmarole.
Right.
You know, so we just did away, there was a unfortunate incident when Mr. Page was the, uh, chairman of the planning board a few years ago, where a, uh, a alleged, uh, massage therapist was providing additional services that were illegal. And the town kind of went a little bit overboard and required all massage therapists to, uh, to get a special permit through the planning board. We, so a couple of months ago, we did away with that. So that, I mean, those type of things, we want to kind of break down the, the barriers to kind of opening, opening a business.
Yeah.
And I guess we've gotten, we have a district called Industrial Garden Park District. Yeah, which seems to be now a catchall for almost anything that doesn't fit in any other zone. So it would be interesting to see what other communities, if they've got a like zone, zoning district like that. I don't, what was the original impetus for industrial garden park?
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing. Well, originally we set up for manufacturing, you know, we just permitted a, uh, assisted living facility. There are storage unit. There's going to soon be a three or four story, uh, storage unit in there.
We have warehouses.
We have warehouses. We have psychiatric facilities. We have medical offices, dental offices. We have architectural offices. And we have traditional manufacturing along with that as well. So I don't know if we really want to tighten it up, or do we want to loosen it even more? I mean, I don't know.
Well, there's vacant properties out there too.
I know.
And you know, if you tighten it, are we going to end up with more vacant properties? So, I mean, it's like.
Industrial garden park doesn't allow the retail sales.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Industrial allows retail sales.
Right.
Or, you know, individual, single family houses are not allowed.
Right, yeah, right. But we want to keep that. We want to, but, but I'm concerned about the amount of empty buildings out there too. You know, that's.
How many block towing get in there?
Yeah. In a North Subway.
Really? I was like, all of a sudden.
Overnight.
This come from?
Yeah.
I, I don't ever remember that coming in front of the planning board.
Contractor yard.
Do you, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Almost next to. And contracting is, contracting is allowed by right in that district if it's.
That's not a contractor.
So you said it's a towing company?
Yeah, it's a towing company.
Really?
Okay. I have to look at that. That might have been before my.
They're broad. It was before your time.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no storage of.
Rob, it was before your time.
Towed vehicles.
Right. Hmm. No, there's no storage there. They're housing vehicles there.
The other big issue is.
I see, okay.
I need a banana strawberry smoothie. I guess, so we have, uh, we have residents A, resident B, resident C.
Drink, take a drink.
That's what's in them in.
What I need to do.
I would look at seeing some of the things, I, I don't think everything in a A, B, and Z zone should be allowed. Like if, if it's allowed in A, it might not be allowed in C or vice versa. Those are kind of things that I'd like to look at because our C is like was a maximum of 10,000.
Yeah.
10,000. Your resident say the maximum is, or the minimum is 30?
Yeah.
25.
25, something like that.
25.
40.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't want, I don't want consistency across the board because then you have people in resident C shoehorning stuff in where there's really not enough space, where there would be enough space if it was in, you know, residence A. That's, yeah.
This is Marilyn Richard.
This is scary that I know this stuff.
Um, I've been involved in town government. I'm just a dinosaur. I've been here for forever. And I've seen things evolve in some ways that, um, concern me and I, and, you know, I look at the industrial garden park and I see things have changed, but by and large, the, the standards are higher than in other zones in terms of those uses. And the properties are pristine. You drive through and generally they look okay.
Yep, yep.
Um, our business zone, you know, we struggle with uses that are back to back with residential property. Trying to make sure that the residents, um, aren't severely impacted, but that the business people are allowed to do business. So that's, that's the struggle that we have. But the biggest concern that I've seen over time is the fact that our residential neighborhoods have eroded. Um, they've eroded and gradually, but, you know, we went through a period of time where we established the home-based trade bylaw to legit, to legitimize a number of home-based trades that were being conducted illegally at their homes based on unenforcement of our zoning bylaws. So we created that bylaw and, but now we're, I'm seeing, um, neighbors' homes that have trucks. Um, and they're doing business. And yeah, some of this evolved through COVID as well because people are now doing more business at home. But I'm, I go up and down neighborhoods and I could find a zoning violation on each one.
That's true.
And I don't know how you can rein that in. I don't know if, that if the horse has left the barn too far in terms of trying to, um, bring back some tighter enforcement and those kinds of issues. I don't know. That's, that's what I've seen.
But I think this is the opportunity to have consultants look at things.
Oh, sure.
Give us some guidance.
The bottom line is what? It's enforcement.
Yeah. And then then.
It's enforcement.
Yeah, but we, and then if we tighten things up and then we, we hand it over to the building inspector, zoning enforcement, then we can, we can start chipping away. It's not going to happen overnight because the problem didn't happen overnight. But I think we're headed in the right direction.
We could look at our bylaws now.
Yes, we can.
Go ahead.
We got.
Yep.
Bob?
Um, just, I'd like to follow up on the comment about the, the neighborhood difficulties and you've seen them erode away over time. You mentioned trucks and home occupations. I wondered if there's o- other specific things that you have in your mind when you say the neighborhoods are eroding. Cause some of it could be zoning and some of that could be enforcement, but some of that could be other things outside zoning enforcement. But I don't know. So it would be helpful to us to kind of get a more specific picture of that.
As, as a former zoning person, I, I speak more to, to what I know are in our bylaws that are not being enforced in terms of personal habits, in terms of how people live their lives, that's not within the purview of our zoning bylaws anyway. Uh, we'd like to say to someone, your yard is a mess. You got to clean it up, but we don't have the jurisdiction to do that unless it's a board of health issue. So, you know, I, I see things where people are conducting businesses that they're, or there are numbers of vehicles, as, as Russ pointed out, on the front lawn. You see on the weekend, all of a sudden it becomes an auto repair shop and people are fixing cars. I mean, these are things that don't belong in a residential zone. And yet, is it a hobby? You know, it, it's a fine line. Is it family activity? I don't know.
I guess the way I put it at a town council meeting a couple of weeks ago, when is it no longer a residential property? So is parking cars on the front lawn overnight a residence, a residential use? Is parking your boat, you know, a residential use in your front yard or should it be on the side yard? Is it having three trailers parked in your yard, um, at one time, a residential use? So I, I think the comparison to some other towns would be good to see whether we're off base or not. But, because then they wouldn't be Russ's rules anymore. They would be the planning board. They'd be Rob Terrell's rules.
Right, I'll stand for it.
So.
You'd need one of his notebooks.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, just, uh, just a clarification and a comment about the parking in the front yard. Um, I've run into this in many communities.
Oh, yeah.
Many of them, it's because in the winter, they ban on street parking. And people have no place to park, so they park in the front yard.
They park on a driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, you know, if you got a duplex or something, there's.
This is, we don't have duplexes and it's not a city. We're a town.
Right. Well, I'm talking about towns. I'm not talking about cities. Um, so is that an issue in this town? Do you have no parking on streets in the winter as a law?
No.
Regulation? No. So that, that's not what's driving the parking in the front.
Not anymore. No.
So that, that's good to know.
No. And I think the town of Bellingham actually has an, an off-street parking requirement or no parking on front lawns. Somehow they, they've been enforcing it.
Yeah, I, I was a long time planning director up in Amherst.
Yeah. And where?
Amherst.
Oh, God.
As you can imagine, we had a lot of people parking all over the place.
Right.
Uh, and we did adopt regulations banning front yard parking and, you know, it had to be enforced. And it was enforced and that made the difference.
Right.
So you know, you know, in the lower valley, we refer to as Amherst as the people's republic.
Right.
It gets referred that way in Amherst.
Yeah, yeah. But. First of all, there, okay.
That's how people on the east side of the state refer to Cambridge.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Yeah. Go ahead, Marilyn.
You know, I'm thinking about, it's a really, it's a fine line, unfortunately, that we're trying.
It is.
Draw. Um, my, my son and daughter-in-law and two grandkids live in town and between them, they have six cars. And, you know, they're all on the property and they're not on the front lawn. But the, the problem is that they are, you know, and this is what keeps our kids off the street and out of the bars and stuff like that, because they're working on their cars. But it's all done tastefully.
If it's a hobby, that's different.
It is. But see, I don't want to do something to impact on that kind of activity. I, you know, I don't want to become a libertarian. I just want to be able to, um, provide, um, a standard that is reasonable and forcible and doesn't impact on the lives of our residents because we are a unique, diverse community.
And I'm not interested in changing the character. I'm just trying to maintain our property values and enhance our property values. So. What else you guys got? Rob, from the development side, what do you see in our bylaws that could be changed? And Cassie, as a business owner?
Well, I think the, a lot of it, when the forms were cleared up, I think that helped.
Yeah, so we did go through a whole application, uh, process a couple of years ago. Bailey, did Bailey do that one?
I think so.
Yeah, he did.
So that, that worked a lot better.
Yep.
So it was good.
And then that took us to Open Go. And we've been doing that ever since.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, I spoke with someone today about, you know, who sort of appears before uh, town boards and asked about, you know, when you, when you get to a hearing, um, do you feel that you've, that you're prepared? Does the board have everything it needs? Or do you find yourself in a situation where the board starts asking for a lot of stuff that wasn't in the application? And the person I spoke with said, no, actually the forms are pretty good. So in terms of being informative. So that was a plus because that's not always what I hear.
Yeah, yeah.
How is site plan review? Can I ask you about site plan review? Go ahead.
I just, so I'm sure Rob or Tom talked to you that we just went through a, uh, pro- well, we went halfway through a process to develop a plan for housing in our center of town.
A little bit.
Yeah. So, and I, you know, we're just like every other New England town where we'd like to see it economically vibrant and have, you know, different types of housing that is actually, uh, I'm gonna say applicable, huh? Caduceous to the.
Needs of our community.
Thank you. Yeah. So, you know, that would be good to, if you had another point of view and other similar sized communities, similar industry mix of our, of our center district would be great. Are they allowed to do that as part of all this?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Well, Tom, you wanted the Saratoga District process to be separate, right? Or did you want that roped into this as well? What was the decision on that?
We'll take any input from anyone.
Yeah.
Uh, if it's data driven and makes sense, so.
Yeah, but Judy, just, just for your sake, I mean.
We'll be working on our schedule for that.
So one, my, one, my task coming up is to, to work on the rest of the Saratoga District, uh, mixed use bylaw for the center. But obviously, you know, we also get any feedback on that as well. That'd be really helpful in this whole process. But just know that, that amendments could be happening simultaneously to this project.
So are you working on that as town planner? Are you working with somebody else on that? Just, uh, what's the process? Okay.
I'm doing that one by myself.
And so what's the timeline for that, Rob?
Uh, September.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
That's the goal.
Hopefully according to Tom. Get there.
I was thinking five years, but.
Oh, I didn't say what year.
That's what we're gonna submit.
November, what year?
Have the.
November of blank.
Yeah, September of this year, we're gonna start the public hearings most likely, I'd say, for that.
Now, um, two.
So you wanted to know about site plan?
Yeah. How's it work for you?
Okay, with that, how about you guys?
Yeah, it works.
You know, mo- most of the time, it's, you know, boom, bang, boom, you're done. Other times, just gets a little more difficult. So, but.
That's not necessarily a bylaw problem. That's a audience problem, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah.
You get a little contested.
Yeah. I, I ask them to address certain issues and then they address anything they want.
I think also.
No one yelled.
A lot of that is perhaps, I guess, the biggest thing from, from the manager's office is, is the liability of the statutory ambiguity. And I think that's why it was put in the charter in the first place to make sure our bylaws are always updated and, and taking into account new, new case law, new state law, uh, from that liability standpoint of, uh, what's allowed and what isn't. We can perhaps not want it, i.e. our hearing tonight. We can perhaps not want it, i.e. our hearing tonight. People don't have a choice. The, the state has said, you gotta do it and you have to allow it and solar, like you brought up. And all the other uses in the industrial garden park, we can't.
Yeah.
Right?
So, um.
Well, I just want to, that, that's the big thing for me to just make sure that, uh, when we're quoting our law, that we're not in sort of direct. Uh, yeah. Conflict with state law or federal state.
I think, uh, one thing I want to add to regards to site plan review is that I think this community benefits very well. To keeping site plan review separate from regulating the use. Because it's made it more clear which permitting path folks have to go down. Like if you're building something that's not a single-family home, you need site plan review. If it's of a certain size or maybe less than a quarter of the total footprint of, for addition. Uh, you can get a waiver from this request. And I think because the language is now so cut and dry. And we no longer have it, it be vague to the point where business owners have to get site plan review waivers all the time. Open, I think is a good step forward for site plan review in our bylaw.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Two, two quick comments, uh, related to some of the conversation. Um, it's been mentioned once or twice as to whether we could provide you with information from other towns on this topic or that's, you know, that zoning thing. That's what we do all the time. We've worked with endless number of towns. So we know who's doing what and who did what. And so we can give you various examples, um, as to how towns address whether, you know. Housing in the downtown or parking or whatever. And.
So Bob, when you do that. Please, please give serious consideration to the other communities that you give us information from.
Right, right.
I don't want to say Cambridge does this. Or Dennis on the Cape does this, or Saugus does that. I'd like, you know, something of a similar size, similar demographic, similar industry base. Something like that.
So I'm gonna put that back on you. What towns do you think of as roughly comparable to who you are? Well, I'm asking for a reason because I've been in a situation before.
I will tell you. So let me tell you. So Mr. Page and I were on a charter commission. Nine, oh, and Mr. Fonseca, nine years ago.
Yeah.
And the first thing we did was to identify similar communities.
Okay.
And if I can remember them, we used, well, Long Meadow.
Yep.
Uh, Wilberham.
Yep.
Almer. South Hadley. Did we use Sturbridge?
Yes, we did use Sturbridge.
Sturbridge. I thought we had nine.
We had Ludlow.
Ludlow.
Yeah.
Did we? I thought we had nine. So there's six.
Southbridge.
I don't know.
No, we stood Sturbridge. We didn't do Southbridge.
Took a couple of little things out.
Yeah, yeah. So we could probably find the other three.
Oh, yeah.
And.
That would be great. That would be great. Um, because I think we've all kind of been in situations before where. We had certain criteria that we use to sort of say, well, this looks comparable. And then you get into a meeting with the community and they go, are you crazy? So. I want direction from you on this. So we don't come back to you with something that feels completely alien to you.
Because as you know, the, the craziest thing, so we have a big project that will come back in front of us. And the traffic engineer came in and was trying to compare us to Marlborough. And it's like, what are you thinking?
No, we did the same thing.
And then we had the planning commission come in on a 40R committee. And the first community they showed us was Chickaby. Well, Chickaby's 50,000 people and we're 16,000. You know, and they're on a major highway and we're not on a major highway and.
They're on two major highways.
Yeah, yeah, so. Just, it, it's that. Because what, what that immediately does diminishes their, um.
Credibility, right.
And so we want, if you're gonna do the work and you're gonna do the work for the town. And we use that. With the townspeople, we want that to be credible when we use it down the road. Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are credible. We might as well.
We want to stay credible.
Yeah.
One of the things I, I would like to do, um, in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we have a third person working on this with us. It's Will Downey in my office, um, who does a lot of zoning work with me. And, um, I want Will to go out there. Um, I've been to East Long Meadow. But I can't get out there in the next couple of weeks and I need somebody's eyes. So Rob, I was gonna ask you, if you're gonna be, if you're not taking any vacation time in the next two weeks, if you've got some time available.
Until now.
I'd like to have Will go out there and maybe you can do a tour with him and sort of show him. Like problem areas, things that are, you're, you guys are concerned about. Maybe some recent projects that you're really happy with and some that you're not happy with. Uh, but we need to get.
With us too, so you can show us all those.
So Tom, Tom wanted to mention parking. So go ahead, Tom.
Oh, wait, you know, sorry, last thing. So, um, just to go back to what Judy was saying. So Judy, I am available, uh, the last week in July, the 28th. To do something like that. Cause I'll be on vacation the week before that. Just so you know. And we can discuss that tomorrow if you want.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to bring up parking sort of as a blanket statement. Uh. Our requirements are either, uh. Good, too good or not good enough. And, and there doesn't seem to be much in between. Uh, especially when it comes to sort of. New development practices in terms of how much impervious area you're taking up on a lot. Uh, we, we take up a lot of space with, uh, I would say archaic parking counts. And I would like to see sort of. What, what sort of comparisons we could, we could draw with what we have that have been in place for quite a while. And, and what's more appropriate for 2025 development and beyond.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments.
Of course.
What are the things with those?
Does that mean, does that mean too?
It's difficult to locate. For the public going through. It's very hard for them to understand. I'd like to take a look at, like, we have business, we have industrial, we have commercial. Um, and I know, I think it's Springfield has instead of like business and commercial, they have business one. And certain businesses are listed in business two. And I think something like that may improve in understanding of what's allowed and where it's allowed. Um, and I think there's stuff that, it's just because it's been in there so long. We've never looked at other communities on how to develop it and change it, um, to. I don't want to say better readability, but when you're looking for something in particular to be able to go and say, oh, this is what I'm looking for. I do like our tables, our table of use. Um, you know, you go under general uses or business. And it's easily identifiable and, you know, whether it be, um, your square footage requirements or setbacks. Or another table, what's allowed and what isn't. Those make things easier, but again, just something like that.
Your second point.
Now that, you know, it's a two, I combined them. My parking, so.
Anything else from anybody?
Good.
Yes?
Um. Non-conforming uses and structures. If I understand correctly, the planning board oversees that section of the bylaw. Is that correct?
Pre-existing non-conforming uses and structures.
You do.
Would be amended by, um, a section six finding, which is the planning board is the special permit granting authority.
Then our bylaw. So that's, that's something that we have in there directly.
Section three, four.
Um, that's, is perfectly fine that you do that way, but it's highly unusual. Cause most, almost all towns use the ZBA to do that process. So I'm just one, and, and we find. Pretty much all the towns we go in, we hear a lot of complaints about either the language that's in the bylaw. Uh, it's, or the process that's used, or something's wrong, or something's not understandable, or those kinds of comments. And I just wondered if there's any particular things that jump to mind. Uh, in terms of how well your process works or if there's something in the bylaw that causes. Some confusion or anything along those lines.
Mr. Page?
So as a property owner that fits under pre-existing non-conforming, not only use, um, but, um, structure. Um, I happen to, um, feel strongly that the planning board should remain the special permit granting authority. Um, I think our planning board over the years has done a phenomenal job with it. Um, they tend to understand it. They tend to dig in a little bit on it. Um, not that I'm saying anything negative about our ZBA. Um, some of their findings I have had issues with, um, where the planning board seems to be working perfectly.
You mean allowing a zoo in a residency zone? Who could complain about that?
I'm just, I, I'm giving you guys kudos. You guys have done a fantastic.
You know, Marion Street.
Just my thought on it.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting to move it to the ZBA. I'm more interested in, you know, how is the process marking, how's the language in the bylaw?
Right.
The, those kinds of.
I think it's been fantastic. It pretty much mirrors, um, the state law, chapter 48. Um, and it's been, to my knowledge, it's been working.
I think the one thing I want to comment on too, in that same section, Bob, is that, you know, we have a, a clause where. If you have a piece of property that might be undersized or lacked the required frontage, but you have the available water and sewer. And your property wasn't subdivided or changed before 1962 or 63, whenever the bylaw was implemented. You can build a house on there. Uh, as long as you use the setbacks from that first bylaw, which was in 1962. Uh, and I think that's been very wonderful for a lot of people in town who've bought these properties or inherited these properties where they're like, oh, I'm gonna build a house here. Oh, wait, I don't have the frontage. And then we find this loophole for them using that section and it's been very well received. And I, I think that's one thing that's very unique to East Long Meadow that you don't see in a lot of other communities that I've, at least I've worked in. Uh, so I think that's one positive to that whole section. And the planning board could also issue special permits for anything that goes above and beyond that. So I think, um, overall that section has worked pretty well from my end in the planning office. Thank you.
So it's.
I know it's getting late.
Yeah.
I wouldn't comment on that. And I don't understand how our ZBA can give frontage variances. Um. Without going through the planning board. I think we have zoning for a reason. And if it says 100-foot frontage, you know what? If it's 95 feet and you want to adjust, fine. But to cut that down to a 20-foot frontage, I don't see how that's even possible. And it's very frustrating when it happens. And truthfully, when the ZBA does it, the only appeal you have is basically to the court. And as a neighbor, you're not gonna appeal it to the court. You're not gonna spend. Typically thousands of dollars on an attorney and all to go through that. It just, um.
We'll take that with special permits too.
Flag lots where a house is behind a house. I think we have our zoning for a reason and it's to prevent that.
I, I hate those lots.
Just a thought.
All right. All right, we're gonna wrap it up, okay?
Okay. Well, thank you. It's been helpful as a start. We, I'm sure we will have more questions for you as we get into this.
Okay, good. We're all, we're all happy to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask that we postpone the item B under new business. So we're to the Planning and Community Development Director's report.
Okay, I was trying to remember what IMB was. Thank you for clarification, Mr. Uh, my report's very short. Uh, so I have the upcoming meeting dates in your schedule there, just so you guys can get those down. We do have a public hearing in addition to the continuing grave that we just heard for a special permit. It's a request for an amendment to an existing special permit for, um, Mo2 Indian Cuisine. They're trying to extend their hours of operation to go beyond, I believe it's 10:00 PM to midnight.
Yeah, I think we had asked them to. Go for a while, see how it, see how it worked before they came in.
Yeah, and he's, he's approaching us about that. Um, and then, uh, just some general updates. Um, so we do have one zoning amendment, public hearing for the town council. Uh, the second reading for private car sales is coming up soon. I believe it's gonna be on July 8th.
It is, I believe so.
Yep, there you go. That's your answer. Um, and then, you know, planning matters up to me. Did have a lengthy discussion about, uh, change in the language. So just heads up about that date and time. Um, so the traffic and pedestrian safety survey that I implemented weeks ago.
Just tiny.
Um, so far we have received 314 online responses. Eight to our survey with more in physical copy at the collection points. I don't know how many there are. There could be way more.
Great.
Um, so the survey is gonna stay open until July 11th. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from people so far, a lot of concerned residents. Uh, lastly, our comprehensive zoning review and diagnostic, which you just saw, we're doing stakeholder interviews, or at least Barrett is. Uh, they reached out to several stakeholders, including town officials, local developers, business owners, residents. Uh, other similar stakeholders, and then of course, board and committee members like you just witnessed. Um, and that's all I had. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.